Good evening, welcome to Speedway Town Council meeting, to our first meeting of 2020. I called the January 13th, 2020 meeting to order at 7:00 PM. My name's Aileen Fisher and I am the President of Speedway Town Council from 2019. Others in attendance this evening, from right to left, I have Councillor Gary Raikes.
Good evening.
Our new councillor Dan Jensen.
Good evening.
I have David Lindsay.
Good evening.
And new councillor Vince Noblet.
Good evening.
Town manager Jacob Bleistall.
Good evening.
Town attorney Bob Clutter.
Howdy do.
We also have in attendance this evening is Senator Mike Young, who's going to be here this evening to swear us all in. But first let's stand and do our pledge.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
So I'll turn this over now to Senator Young to give us maybe an update on what's going on downtown.
Okay, well, I'll tell you what, why don't we swear everyone in, then I'll do that. So if you'll stand and raise your right hand for me and repeat after me, I state your name.
I, Gary Raikes.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And that I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
Indiligently discharge.
Indiligently discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of town council member in your district.
Of the town council, District 1.
Okay, according to the law and to the best of my ability.
According to the law and to the best of my ability.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, just a brief update, we're starting, as most people know, we started the third Tuesday in November and we were out to prepare our bills for session. We began the session on January the 6th, so this is the second week of session. We'll end around March the 14th, go past that. There is one bill of interest, I won't say too much about it right now, that affects the town of Speedway, and that's your road money. When it comes to the issue of taking in the township fire departments, if those, any of the three townships that we have left that have not merged with IFD, if they merge with IFD Pike, Wayne, and Decatur Township, that increases the fire district for the city. And what that means is they get a bigger proportion of the road money, which I think will take Speedway down about $22,000. So I'm going to try to do everything under my power to ensure that doesn't happen, so you can keep your money. The bill, I don't know if it's been filed yet, it was supposed to have been filed by Friday, I haven't seen it on the list. But if it does get filed, I'm going to do everything in my power to ensure that the residents of Speedway keeps the money that they've paid in for the use of your road, and it'll save you some money there. But I'll update you when that, when the bill's finally killed during session and let you know that progress. With that, really, my normal thing of operation is I work for you all, not only the town board, but also the citizens in Speedway. If you ever have any issues or questions or things that I can be helpful with, like when we work together for Main Street and saving the schools and the library and police communication, feel free to give me a call. I work for you, so use me as much as you can. With that, thank you and congratulations to you again on your victory.
Thanks, Senator.
Thank you very much, Senator.
Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the December 9, 2019 meeting. Any changes to those minutes? Hearing, no changes, those have been approved. Third on the agenda is the approval of the access road project agreement. Jacob.
Yeah, Madam President, so this is an agreement between the town and the Indianapolis Motor Speedway that lays out provisions for how we can make progress along Georgetown Road as well as build an access road off of Crawfordsville Road that would lead up to the American Legion Post 500. With us this evening is the President of the Speedway, Doug Bowles, who can talk a little more about kind of what the plans are along Georgetown Road and kind of where exactly the access road to Legion Post 500 will go. And also, he's prepared some slides that we can throw up to kind of help with the explanation and provide some visuals for this.
Fantastic, thank you, Jacob, Madam President, council members, congratulations. It's always fun when you get to see American democracy at work, and coming to see you guys get sworn in today is a pretty awesome moment for all of us, so thank you, congratulations, and thanks for the service. We know you do it because you love the community, and I really appreciate that, and it's one of the things that makes our country and our state so great, so thank you very much. You know, I think Jacob touched on it really well. Well, first of all, let me also say I have Kim Reeves here with me as well. Kim Reeves is with Browning, and Browning has helped us really from the beginning of a lot of the projects that led up to Project 100, and as we were thinking through that, worked alongside of the town and with us as we've been thinking through, how do we manage Georgetown Road, safety and security for our folks who come to the Indianapolis Motor Speedway, the residents of Speedway, and then American Legion Post 500, which is, if you haven't done it, breakfast on race morning at American Legion Post 500 is one of those moments that you have to do as part of the Indianapolis 500. And the number of people who come from around the country, and that's where they have their breakfast, at that Legion post, is a pretty cool moment as they walk through the gates and have had breakfast at the Legion. We enjoy them as partners, and when the roundabout came about, access to the Legion was difficult. So the town, Speedway Redevelopment Commission, the Indianapolis Motor Speedway, has been working alongside the Legion to try and find a way to remedy that issue for them, and at the same time, find a way for us to make sure that safety and security is one of the things that we focus on for our customers as they come in, especially on Indianapolis 500 Race Day and Brickyard 400 Race Day. So I've got a few slides just to walk you through how things are going to work. There is an access agreement or easement agreement that we will execute with the Legion, along with the town and the Speedway Redevelopment Commission, but if you could slide through those, give us those slides here. So this first slide is really a photo of the existing conditions at the Indianapolis Motor Speedway as we speak. So there are various areas throughout Georgetown Road between our Gate 1 or the roundabout and Tunnel 7, which is at the exit of Turn 4 for those folks who are trying to put it in their mind on the racetrack. Those bump outs that you see on that photo to the right where we have the temporary jersey barriers there, thank you to the town for allowing us to create those bump outs. When we built the elevators, which gave us, for the first time in our history, access for folks with ADA, to sit in the, with disabilities, to sit in our best seats in the house, those elevators encroached so closely upon our perimeter fencing on the west side of the property that it made flowing traffic, pedestrian traffic north to south virtually impossible. So those bump outs have allowed us to work around those since 2016 when those were put in. On the left, you can kind of see how the road looks today from the north end with the signage and the way we transitioned to, the way we transitioned to the two lanes south of 7th Street. And if you go to the next slide, the next slide gives you an idea of what we are proposing along Georgetown Road going forward. And if you look, if you look all the way to the right of that photo where you see that handrail, that handrail is today the existing western perimeter of the Indianapolis Motor Speedway. What we would do is take down that exterior fence, replace it with a handrail there, because there are some elevation changes inside the Speedway at that point where on the east side of that you would step down, and it's really difficult to really think through how we manage that. So the easiest way for us to do that was add some handrail there. And then what you see on the left there is a new perimeter fence. That fence would be, I want to call it semi-permanent. It will be movable, so someday in the future when, together with the town and the Speedway and the Legion and others decide how we want to use the eastern two lanes of Georgetown Road, we have the ability to move that. That fence would be, excuse me, that concrete barrier there would be put in place through a machine onsite, and then it would have a fence on top of that that would replicate or look exactly like the southern perimeter fence of the Indianapolis Motor Speedway currently. So if you drive down 16th Street today, that fencing that you see, it's a black, high-end chain link fence, would be on top of that. And then we would extend, and this doesn't really have to do with what we're talking about here today, but we would extend that fencing perimeter on our current perimeter north of 7th Street all the way up to 25th Street. So the entire western perimeter of the Indianapolis Motor Speedway would be uniform, it would be an upgrade. We would work with the town, we would work with Chief Fishburne and Chief Campbell on where we locate our gates. We believe that the gates will be located in virtually the same area, but we'll work with law enforcement to make sure that those gates, as we put them in in that new perimeter, are easy access for law enforcement if it's needed, also easy access getting customers in and out. If you go to the next slide, the next slide is an overhead view, and you are looking at the top of Turn 1, is what you see on the bottom where you see B Stand and the penthouse boxes. Above that, you see Georgetown Road at our southern perimeter. What you don't see is the roundabout. The roundabout is further south there. What we would do, our current western perimeter, just north of the roundabout and our Gate 1, would remain where it is up to about halfway, a little past halfway of where the Eldoo, the Eldoo property sits. Then we would move out to one lane, to that, so there would be three lanes wide. We would carry that forward north, and if you can go to the next slide, to just past the Wilcox property, to basically adjacent to where our property is, and then we would move that fence line out to about three feet to the east of the perimeter, or the middle of Georgetown Road. We would carry that forward all the way to 7th Street. Would you notice on the bridge there, that's a rough idea of where we would put a pedestrian bridge across the creek there. If you think about what happens today along Georgetown Road, this is just north of the Legion. If you are walking pedestrian traffic, especially when Georgetown Road is open, you have to get out in the road to get around that. So we would construct a pedestrian bridge somewhere in that general vicinity. We need to work with the town and a few other things to make sure we have it in the right location, so we can ensure that those that are walking can stay out of the road. So we will, we will get that done from a safety standpoint. Now, if you go to the next slide, further north, this leads up to Tunnel 7, which is that tunnel just at the exit of Turn 4. So that's where we would then go back, we would transition back to four lanes of Georgetown Road. In the little red box there, you see we will work with the town and we'll figure out the appropriate way to put the right island in there to transition from the four lanes down to two lanes. One thing that doesn't, that we don't have in this, in these slides for today, we also work with the town to think about the signage at 25th and Georgetown and make sure that we are signing appropriately, so that when folks come down Georgetown Road or come from 25th Street and are trying to go south on Georgetown Road, south of 25th Street, that they understand that they can't get out at the south end of it, so hopefully that we can deter some of that traffic that does take place on Georgetown Road. If you can go to the next slide, the next slide, and this is where it really becomes important, we talked a little bit about how it was important to assist the Legion, getting folks to the Legion. So this depicts where the access road, the easement agreement that we will, that we will work out with the Legion would be built. So that, it enters off of Crawfordsville Road at what is today Cord Street, and then I'll make a 90-degree turn to the east, up to the eastern edge of our property there, and then turn 90 degrees to the left or north, and taking us all the way down to the Legion, where it will make a 90-degree right-hand turn into the Legion. This will allow the Legion easier access to Lafayette Road, it will make it easier for them to ensure that their customers are coming, it'll make it easier for folks to know where the Legion is, and this is something that the Legion has asked us to look into over the last several years, and thank you to the town, the Speedway Redevelopment Commission for helping work through that issue. I've had some preliminary conversations, as has Jacob, with the commander, and Commander Lawson is here tonight at the Legion, and they're supportive of this concept, so we're excited about that opportunity to get that done. In our mind, the timing for this, if you all approve, would be that we get this approved, we will look at beginning to move that perimeter road along Georgetown, and the hopes then is that that Georgetown Road could be moved in time for this May's Indianapolis 500 and the July Brickyard 400 immediately following the Brickyard 400, we would go into construction mode in that access road for the Legion and get that completed as quickly as possible so that they can get that, get that settled. We've got a little bit of work to do getting ready for that, and to the extent we can expedite timing on that, we will, but right now, that's kind of where we think we would be. I think I have one more slide in there, if I, there's not another slide. So I'll just talk a little bit about what that road will look like. That road will be two 11-foot lanes with two feet of 53 gravel on either side of it, and it will be on a six-inch base of gravel. We'll do some, we will do some soil work on the front end to make sure we stabilize the soil, then, and then there'll be six-foot asphalt and three different layers on top of that. So that road is what the road will look like under construction. Any questions?
I think we probably need a motion, so I would, so that we can actually have discussion on it, but I would move that we approve the access road project as, agreement as presented. Also, can I?
Okay, the first and a second, so now we can open for questions, councillors.
So what's the timeframe then on Georgetown Road again, just to review that, or is, that would start immediately right now?
Yeah, so I think what we would, so we would need to get drawings to the town before we can start on anything. So the next step would be to get drawings to the town to apply for the appropriate permits that we would need, and then together with the town, we would begin to work, I think, with DMD in terms of the pieces of property or the lanes that would actually be inside of the new perimeter fence. So we would do that sort of in a parallel path as we go forward. Our hope would be that we could present some sort of plans for the zoning team and the permitting team to take a look at sometime in the week of the 20th.
And just to clarify again, I think you said that the actual, the access road would be something that you'd probably look to do after the Brickyard.
Correct.
In early July, start then, possibly sooner, but that's, that's less likely.
That's right, and we, and we will try and do everything we can to expedite that, but we feel very comfortable that once the Brickyard 400 has completed, that we will be able to begin that project, and we want, just like you, as soon as we can get that access for the Legion Post 500, we think it's really important to get it done.
Any other questions? So we'll, this time, open questions up for the councillors from the public. Questions or comments? If you want to step up to the...
Yeah, come to the lecture.
I'm just curious as to where the actual road, is it where the cut is already there, the Legion Road that we're referring to? So it would be west of the liquor store, right there? Okay.
Yeah, right now, our plan is, it's actually Cord Street that, it's just kind of a stuff, but it is, it is a street that kind of goes north.
Okay, and it's already gravel kind of going through there?
The Cord Street itself is paved, but then, yeah, there is kind of gravel road that this would go over.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor approving the road access project agreement, say aye.
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 Opposed?
I abstain.
Okay, so I have a 4-0-1 vote. Thank you, Doug, for coming this evening and explaining that. Next is Resolution 2020-1, this is a resolution regarding the designation of surplus properties.
Thank you, Madam President. So as I mentioned before, we acquired what was previously the PNC Bank building for us to renovate and convert into a town headquarters office. Part of our negotiation was to acquire the furniture and some of the supplies that were inside of the bank, and so then we technically acquired those as part of the acquisition of the property. We've done an extensive project to kind of go through all the furniture to figure out what was still in good condition, what made sense for us to reuse, trying to reuse as much as possible. However, of course, not everything can be reused or something that we're going to continue to keep in the building. So as part of the process, our trustee attorney, Mr. Clutter here, advised me that we needed to go through a process. You can't just kind of go in and say, "Well, we think this is bad" and throw it away. So part of what you have in the resolution is a list that kind of details out what's staying and what's going, and so we would ask for your approval to move forward as part of the project.
Madam President, I make a motion, we approve Resolution 2020-01.
Second?
I have a first and a second for Resolution 2020-1. This time we'll take public comments. Seeing no public comments, any questions from councillors?
In the fairness of time, I was going to have Jacob read all the items, but it's 22 pages, so I'll spare you.
We're very detailed. We had a very good intern, Speedway spark plug, actually, graduate, it's very thorough, did a good job for us.
Jacob, you may have said this, but when these go for sale, will the public will have an opportunity to take a look at these, or?
We determined that we were really utilizing, we were really utilizing the property that we needed, so some of it can be given away likely, but we didn't, in talking with people that know more about it than I do, they advised that probably not going to get anything out of a sale, but, so, but yes, it's the same process, we still need to kind of designate a surplus.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor approving Resolution 2020-1, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, approved 5-0. Next is the determination to act as a hearing examiner, set hearing date, and this is Tim Grau.
Good evening, council. This agenda item is related to the 2500 High School Road project. Everything's moving along rapidly now, including the agreements that have been executed with the Circle K shops, the Shell stations out there. So as part of that deal, there are two options on the table. For Circle K, they will be closing their shop soon. They either have the option to try and get rezoning on the corner and move, build a brand-new station on the corner of 25th and High School, or if they're unable to get that rezoning and everything, all the approvals they need, then they would be able to be purchased by the developer and then move on. So they're choosing to exercise and go as far as they can, and hopefully they get the approval for the new Circle K station, approximately 6330 Devonier Lane, now that everything's executed moving forward. This would be the same process we went through for the rezoning of the property. So the step, first step, is that they have to come and do the rezone request through special hearing examiner. We are, they are requesting that the special hearing examiner would be the town council. We have an option, being an excluded city and town, for either be the local town council or there's actually a Marion County hearing examiner that could hear it as well. So it is our opinion that we like to, since this is a Speedway issue, it should be heard by the Speedway Town Council, the elected officials of the town. So tonight, we are looking for a motion that recommends, that establishes the town council as the special hearing examiner, and then sets a date for the special hearing for the rezoning, which Circle K will present. We're requesting that that date be your February 10th, 2020 meeting at 7:00. That would allow them the required 23 days of notice that they'll need to publish.
Madam President, I make a motion that the Speedway Town Council act as the hearing examiner for the rezoning request for the property located at 6330 Devonier Lane, and then we set the hearing date for the council meeting on February 10th, 2020 at 7:00 PM at the town hall. Second?
So a first and a second for the determination and acting of the hearing examiner. This time we'll take any public comments. Seeing no public comments, any questions from councillors?
Tim, what's the, once we, once we have the hearing, is there a step with the city after that? Is that correct?
Yeah, well, so if you have given approval, they have, I think it's within seven days to either accept that approval or appeal it to the Metropolitan Planning Commission for further review. So we went through this process the last time and included this language, and they appealed it to the Metropolitan Planning Commission. So we're effectively coming back to the town council with the exact same language, more information, and it'll be led by Circle K versus the town during the rezone this time.
Yeah, so they would go to the Metropolitan Development Commission, your decision. If neither side appeals it, then it goes on the no-appeal docket, but nonetheless, it has to be approved by the Metropolitan Development Commission, then ultimately the city county council.
Okay, thank you.
So we're, and we're doing the full 25 acres, not just that partial that that?
You'll be, so what we rezoned it to, it sounds kind of weird, we rezoned it from a commercial special district to a commercial special district, and now we're amending the commercial special district again. So you're adding a use, and the reason this can't be a variance, why it has to be a rezone, is commercial special districts have specific uses and non allowable uses within them. So what you're effectively doing is adding a fueling station as an allowable use within that commercial special district.
Okay.
So yes, it'll affect that entire area. The language is very specific, as we worked out with the Metropolitan Planning Division last time as well.
Okay.
So, Tim, are they going to, basically, they resolved the issue in terms of wellhead and locating?
I don't believe that issue has been resolved. I think Circle K has come with additional data and information and is much better prepared to tackle that specific issue, whereas we are coming in with a broad perspective of what we wanted to see out there. Circle K will be able to come in and fight on their behalf, as well as what they're looking for. I think the town and the redevelopment commission are supportive of the request, it's just a matter of convincing the Metropolitan Planning Division.
Good.
All right.
Any other questions? We'll go ahead and take a vote then for the determination to act as a hearing examiner and have a set hearing for our February 10th, 2020, 7:00 PM council meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, so approved 5-0. Next is the approval for our on-call service agreements for the year of 2020. Jacob?
Thank you, Madam President. So we have agreements with various engineering firms for work that just kind of comes up on an ad hoc basis throughout the year. So rather than create a whole contract, come to council, get it approved, to do minor work, we enter into an on-call, sometimes it's called a master services agreement, but it just allows us to utilize our services on a limited basis throughout the course of the year. We have four different firms that we've used previously. Actually, Donahue and Associates is one that we haven't used in the past, but we would like to do an on-call agreement with them. There might be some that are added through the course of the year, just as different needs and specialties and expertise come up, but these are the ones that we would like to get rolling here at the beginning of the year, and would appreciate your approval.
Madam President, I move that we approve the on-call services agreement as presented.
I'll second.
I have a first and a second for the on-call approval service agreements. We'll open for public comments, questions. Seeing no public comments or questions, any questions from councillors?
So what kind of services are we've been using through these four? You said that one of them was brand new, but the other ones were, are you talking about at the plants, water plant, wastewater treatment?
Yeah, it's on the public works side, so it's water, wastewater, and also sometimes street department or stormwater we'll use for, and again, it's a small, maybe we'll need them to help us put a plan together and provide some engineering drawings for a minor project that we're working on. And so these all have limits of, between $25,000 and $50,000 freeze for the year. So it's more minor, kind of just stuff that comes up throughout the year that we can utilize their services without entering into a separate agreement.
Okay.
Just helps us kind of do things more efficiently and expedite processes.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor approving the on-call service agreements with Commonwealth, Donahue, Wesling, and Kessler Consulting Group, say aye.
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 Those opposed, approved 5-0. Next on the agenda is our claims. Our clerk treasurer is out sick today, so we do have claims for approval needing for dates from December 7 through January 10 of 2020. And I know these were distributed by Monty earlier last week.
Madam President, I make a motion, we accept the claims as presented this evening.
Second?
First and a second on the claims presented to us by the clerk treasurer's office. Any questions or comments from public? Seeing none, any questions from councilors? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor approving the claims as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, claims approved 5-0. Next are the adjustments for the same dates, December 7 through January 10, 2020.
Madam President, I make a motion, we approve the utility adjustments as presented this evening.
Second?
I have a first and a second for the utility adjustments. Any questions or comments from public? Any questions from councilors? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor approving the adjustments, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, adjustments approved 5-0. Next on the agenda is reports from our department head. So we will start with the economic developer, Tim Graup.
Good evening again, council. Several updates for you this evening, projects around the town. There's a lot of activity. It's been a very active time here at the beginning of the year, so it's exciting. Tenton Polco, real quick, it looks like they're working through the stormwater drainage items with Norm, and it looks like they've gotten approval for those, and will be working on adapting those, so we should see some progress moving forward. The weather being good has helped that project a lot, so I'm not sure of an exact time they'll be completed with that, but they'll finish it up. We'll put the fence up, they'll come back and seed it here in the spring. Gilman Street, they're putting, they're putting concrete down, and they're putting all the windows in as well, so everything's moving fine there. We anticipate that to be open and tenant, tenants are contacting me saying they should be in by mid-May, is what they're telling them. So we'll be excited to have a couple announcements there and see some activity, but everything's moving along smoothly with that project and seeing some good progress. 1300 Block, to let you know, the developer is demolishing the Autotech Building. They have all the permits, everything's disconnected, ready to go. It's more of an equipment issue. They have a big demo up in Lafayette, they're trying to pull a piece of equipment down to get that taken care of. So if it's not this week, it'll most likely be next week, and we'll keep you informed on that as well. As far as Will Shaw, so we had requested the developer to come tonight. He was advised not to come this evening, so I'll give an update. So we had, at the beginning of the year, sent out the notice that we believe they're in non-compliance of the EDA effective in the new year. They have 30 days to respond and provide a makeup plan. They have responded to us, as expected, kind of denying most of our claims. So we will, we continue to have weekly conversations between our attorney and the developer. They keep promising updates as well as progress. However, we haven't seen anything substantial that would lead us to believe the startups happening anytime soon, so our next actions will allow that 30 days, as per our notification, to go up, and then we will respond accordingly in February with follow-up action items, putting them on notice of what we believe to be the proper steps per the EDA. So unfortunately, I don't have a very good update tonight with a lot of information, other than at this point, we're in that period of time where we're sending legal letters back and forth trying to come to a resolution. In the meantime, we continue to reiterate that the best course of action is that they call us up one of these Fridays and give us a timeline for when they'll be back on track and out there working. That's ultimately the best solution that could happen. There's been a lot of media here the last couple of weeks, and continues to be requests. We will provide information as we receive it. We just haven't received much information to date, but we will keep you posted. I know that everybody's frustrated, and hopeful that this project gets restarted sooner than later. We don't want that project sitting in its current state, especially during the month of May, as we get a lot of visitors and exposure. So we will continue to update you as we receive information. And on a positive note, I mentioned it just back on the Circle K, everything's moving really well up at 2500 High School Road. We had our bond sale last week, it went fantastic. The market was, was perfect for the bond sale, really good rates, and everything went fine there. We're in the process of getting signatures to close that bond out on January 22nd, next Wednesday. We're doing the property transfer this Friday to the developer. We are, we have the final contracts with the Atlas Escavating to do all the site work. We anticipate them to start that process and be on-site any time. So everything's kind of lining up, and we hope to see some movement out there and pushing some dirt at 2500. We've still got a lot of little loopholes to close with the AT&T property. IPL still needs to move the lines, but all that's in process. We anticipate all that getting finished here by the end of the month. So hopefully, we'll see some dirt moving. I mentioned earlier that Circle K will be closing that shop. I do not have an exact timeline on that, and that will start their remediation and demo process as well. And then the last thing that'll happen, we'll turn over sites and hopefully be able to announce some of the tenants here in the next month, hopefully by the state of the town. And then depending, we had a little bit of a delay here, we're about a month behind, but we'll get an updated timeline. The last thing we'll do is the 25th and High School intersection. We'll try to coordinate that as to not interfere with the activities of May. Originally, we're hoping to be done mid-May for all that, and we'll hopefully still stay on that schedule if possible. Any questions?
Question may not be for you, Tim. Is there a timing on the lane on Cawfordsville Road, turning north onto High School Road? Do we?
When it warms up.
Is that a spring?
Yeah, it just, they need the temperature to be, I forget the exact temperature, I wanna say maybe 50 degrees or 55 and rising.
Yeah, I had to sustain it for so many days straight.
Yeah, and otherwise, the application of the lane tape that they use now won't really apply, so they, we're gonna have to wait until it warms up for that to happen.
Good question.
I'd just like to make one comment about the hotel. It's not a hotel yet. I know, Tim, you and I have spoke a lot over the last few weeks about this, and I'm as frustrated as everybody is in the town about that, and I understand it's under the attorneys and their talk, but I appreciate the work that you're doing, that the SRC is doing to make sure that project gets back on course. I know we, as a council, I don't want to speak for everybody, but we're as frustrated and disappointed in that development, and I hope he's been aware of that. We're very disappointed, and we need, we need to see some action, see it soon.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Next is Police Chief Jim Campbell.
Good evening. We're currently working on our 2020 goals and objectives for the department. We turned those over to the commissioners, and they approved those this morning. You know, now we'll work on the goals and objectives for each, each of the shifts and detectives, and hope to have those done pretty soon. Secondly, it's ironic that Doug Bowles is here, but our first public safety meeting will be February the 11th at 1:30, which is hard to believe, but the planning has started. So, and we appreciate you being here. The last one is Kalia. We currently will have an audit, February 14 through the 22nd, and as most of you know, the Kalia standards, there's about 184 standards. What you have to do is provide proofs. You know, it's one thing to say, "We're doing this," but you literally provide proofs for each one of those standards to, you know, reach the accreditation standards that Kalia requires. So, that's all I got.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Next is Fire Chief.
Lengthwise, I don't know if I can beat that.
Hey, good evening. Wanna welcome Vince and Dan.
Thank you.
It's nice to have a few new faces up there. I mean, other than Eileen, you know, there's not a lot to look at up there.
(Laughter).
No.
Chief, I second that.
Yeah. Couple of things that we're doing. We have had our, we've met with the entire department over a three-day period to look at some things from 2019, some improvements we can make in our rules and regulations. There's also a wellness initiative that we're doing through a two-year contract we have with a company called Pro Team. They have a facility up at Grand Park in Westfield, but they come to our facility. It's why you couldn't meet in our training room. They will evaluate ways for our guys to improve just small muscle and muscular skeletal things. They work hand-in-hand with IPEP, which is pretty much everyone's workman's comp carrier. We were able to squirrel away some money in 2019 to be able to pay them for what they're doing this year, and then in this year's budget, it's, it's not a huge expense, we were able to find it in some of our fitness money and our physical money. Really neat concept, and we're hoping, what they do is they evaluate all of our guys, give them just really basic exercises to do through PT each day that they're required to do anyway, a certain amount of time, and they give them new exercises every four months. And then at the end of the year, they'll be able to evaluate, first of all, to know whether a guy has actually participated wholeheartedly, but it, we're hoping, we're hoping it cuts down on just some of the workman's comp issues that we have, and loss of work, and money for overtime and those sorts of things. So we're hoping to do that. We're calculating and getting all of our year-end run information and stuff together for annual report, and really, that's about it. Our new LED lights got delivered today. They'll be starting to get installed at Station 88 here. When that project's done, we'll be going to LED at 89. Think, you know, through, really through Norm's help, when they did it down at the plant, you look at the savings, and we're doing time and materials on the installation. We bought the lights direct out of last year's budget, maintenance budget, and we think in about four years, they'll pay for themselves, plus they're just gonna be so much more energy-efficient. They're brighter, fewer, fewer lights up on the ceiling for, you know, things to hit and break, and, you know, that's what firefighters are good at, breaking things sometimes, you know, and sometimes they get in a hurry for some reason, so, but appreciate, appreciate the ability to be able to purchase some of those and improve a few things before we know exactly where we're going down the road. So, do you guys have any questions at all? All right, thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Next is Park and Rex, but I do not see, Kelly's gonna give the report tonight.
Hi, Tammy couldn't be here this evening, but she asked me just to share a brief update that tickets are still available for the second annual Winter Wonderland Prince and Princess Ball. It is all ages, so you're all welcome to attend. It'll be held February 1st from 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m., and this year, it'll actually be at the Speedway Legacy Inn on Cunningham. They've donated their space to us, so it should be pretty magical. Information and online registration can be found on our website at SpeedwayIN.gov, and click on the online registration button on the homepage, and you'll be able to find those, that ticket information there.
Was this the, what they did last year just for the elementary?
Last year, it was held at the high school, I believe. I think it was still open to all ages, so if a parent and child, or teenager, anyone wants to come, everyone is welcome, and you dress up in your fancy attire, and you're treated like royalty for the day, so.
Okay. Thanks, Kelly.
Thanks.
Next is the report, Public Works. Jacob?
Thank you, Madam President. Wastewater, they are working towards post-closure certification of landfill. At one point, where our wastewater plant says it was a landfill, and there's a lengthy process of going through post-closure certification, but they are getting towards the tail end of that, and Norm has been working hard on bringing that to conclusion. And then also, the new Influent fine screen that we've been working on for quite some time has been ordered and is scheduled to arrive later this month. So that's the, the screen, as raw sewage enters the plant, there's an initial screening process, so you're welcome for that visual. The water plant, we're going through meter replacements, a lot of work through the distribution system, and then also taking advantage of the fact that the surface water treatment plant is currently down operations for the winter, so they're scrubbing and making repairs to, to the surface water plant as part of standard annual maintenance. And then the street department is getting back out there, working on filling potholes as, as weather allows, as well as doing a lot of vehicle maintenance and, and that kind of thing, again, as, as, as the weather allows them to do that. And that's the report from our Public Works group. Any questions on anything they're doing?
How did the wastewater do with all the rain last, over the weekend?
Yeah, it seems to have performed well, and we didn't have any, any sewage overflow or anything like that in the system. So it's, and from the, also important, the stormwater system, dry run ditch, everything is performing as well. As we had hoped, there was one outage at one point in the system. We got a call from a resident that there was some, some backing up there, so we sent our own call crew. They went out, figured out where the issue was, broke it up, and that, that helped it kind of resolve the issue, but that was kind of the only complaint, or should say the only call that we, we got as part of the process. We got a lot of rain.
Yeah, that was good. Thank you.
Okay. And Jacob, your report for town manager?
Yes. So I'm gonna first open by requesting concurrence on an item. When we were doing budgeting this year for the 2020 budget, back in 2019, there was discussion about providing a raise for the school crossing guards as part of the discussions. Unfortunately, they didn't make it into the salary ordinance that you all just passed, and although we did talk about it in, in that, in that meeting, in that public meeting, it just didn't get translated into the actual ordinance itself. So it's part of that, working with our town attorney, requested that to make sure it's, it's approved publicly, even though it's a, what do you call it, a scrivenor's error?
Scrivenor's error.
So, even though it's just, you know, an error in translation, requested that we get a concurrence from all of you to move forward with implementing that, that raise.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
Yeah, the people that do that, I know, we all see them out there for an hour in the morning, helping kids get to school, and then an hour in the afternoon, getting from school. They work very hard, and it doesn't really matter what, how cold or rainy or whatever it is, they're out there, they do good, do a good job for us. Part of my update, so the US Census, it's 2020, and there will be a census, and so we kind of wanna just put that on everyone's radar, that that's happening. And then we anticipate that the library will be hosting a job fair for people who will work for the census, so if you're looking for some employment, they will be opening that up, and like I said, also, everybody, everybody will be getting the requests to provide the information for the census, and it's, it's very important that we'll do that. There, there will be more of a kickoff, both from the federal level and local level, but I just wanna make, you know, put that in people's minds, that's, that's important, and it's coming up here. I also wanna mention, it's exciting, the work on the town headquarters, town hall project has physically started. I kind of joked last time, we, there's an approval for the item to start with the demolition remediation and moving furniture out, and it was the actual, we'd done so many agreements, but it was actual work that was going to happen finally. So that, that actually started today, so there are people there working, and if you drive by, particularly around kind of the backside, you'll see actual work and people starting to get to work on that project. And last but not least, dry run ditch project, as, as we had a public meeting and we've been talking about, the LOMAR, Letter of Map Provision was approved by FEMA. However, that kicked off a comment period. It was about a three-month comment period, which meant that it wasn't truly effective until it had gotten through the comment period, and that will take place and becomes effective on January 24th. So the wait is finally over. So at that point, you'll be able to contact, FEMA will basically put their maps online, and you'll be able to talk to your mortgage company, your insurance company, whoever it is you need to talk to. You can, some folks had asked me for a letter or something from the town. You can, some folks had asked me for a letter or something from the town. We can provide that, but, but they're not really gonna be too concerned about what we say. They're gonna want to see what, what FEMA has, and again, those will be, show and become effective on the federal system on the twenty-fourth. That's all I have.
That's great news. That's been years. Did have one question, and maybe you want to push it to next meeting. I know Monty had talked, he's ill this evening, but you talked about some uncashed checks in sixteen and seventeen, from sixteen seventeen. Were those something you want to deal with tonight or just push it to next meeting?
Uncashed checks.
Do you want me to jump into that? Yeah, I, I didn't realize Monty wasn't gonna be here tonight, but he had talked to me a couple weeks ago about the procedure to write off these checks. He has some uncashed checks. All of them are at least two years old, some are three and even four years old. There's, in your packet, I think there was a list, there's a total of, just at first glance, maybe five or six thousand dollars worth of checks.
Actually totaled it.
Oh, you did?
And my math could be wrong, but eighty-two, thirty-eight, thirty-eight.
Okay, eighty-two hundred dollars. These are all in checks from January, well, I think the oldest is January of sixteen, and the most recent is maybe October of seventeen. And the State Board of Accounts recommends that after two years, you go ahead and write off those and cancel the checks.
Just to be clear, these are checks that we wrote, we approved and wrote.
Have never been cashed.
And never been cashed. Yeah, it's crazy.
And, and nobody ever came back and asked for it or, you know, said, "I never got it in the mail" or whatever.
Are we not required to eschew them to the state?
I'm sorry?
Are we not required to eschew them to the state?
No, not for, those are only if the claimant is deceased.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, I move that we approve the.
Writing off.
Writing off of the uncashed checks that have been presented by our clerk treasurer for the rough amount of eighty-two hundred dollars.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
I will second.
If I didn't say it was a motion, that was a motion.
So, we have a first and a second then for the uncashed checks. Questions from the public or comments? Questions from counselors? Go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor approving, writing off the uncashed checks, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, approved, five-zero. All right, any other questions? And then, Bob, you're on the spotlight. Our clerk treasurer has resigned. Can you tell the public what the process is in regards to?
Yes, the, the process is all driven by state statute to select his replacement, and the county Republican chairman is required to call together all the precinct committee people within the district that elected the clerk treasurer within thirty days of the day he vacates office. I think the, as I recall, his letter of resignation said that he was gonna vacate the end of January. So, within thirty days of that, the county GOP chair will call what's known as a caucus of all of the Republican precinct committee people for that area, for the Town District of Speedway, and those people will elect his successor, whoever that may be. So, anybody that's interested in that would need to apply through the county chairman, anybody that's interested in, in pursuing that. But it is, again, all driven by state statute, and the elected precinct committee people will select the replacement.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry, what, what position was that for?
Clerk treasurer.
The town of Speedway?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Next are reports from the counselors. We will start with Counselor Gary Ices.
Not a lot to report this evening, just would also like to welcome Dan and Vince. It's great to have you here and look forward to serving with you and, and David and Eileen going forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Counselor Vince Noblet.
I just want to say thank you to the citizens of town of Speedway, voting me into council. I take it as, as an honor to serve the town, like I have on the redevelopment commission for twelve years, and I, I hope that we can get the job done and get, in four years from now, we get some of our goals set and get those accomplished. My short-term goal is to go around and visit all the departments. Fire department will be last, of course. But, you know, I need to get to know what's going on in each of the department, what, what drives them, what, you know, what help do they need from us in order for them to do their job? And once I better understand that, that will just, that will make me a better counselor at this point in time. So, again, I look forward to serving the town of Speedway. That's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you, Vince. Next, Counselor Dan Jetson.
Yeah, I too would like to thank the citizens for voting for me. Very excited to be a part of this and what Speedway is, what they've been doing and what they're, what we're going, the direction that we're moving. So, I'm very excited to be here, and as I've gotten to know more and more people, I just keep getting more and more excited, so, yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan. And then, Counselor David Lindsay.
Just also like to echo Gary's thoughts of welcoming Dan and Vince to the table with us and look forward to the next four years. That's all I have.
Okay. And then, last would be my report. I too would also like to welcome Vince and Dan to this table here. There is a lot of work for what we do up here, but it's not said that we can't do it without our department heads and our leaders of each of our departments, so thank you to all of them and look forward to 2020 and another four years. So, with that, the last thing on our agenda then is to elect the councilor officers for 2020.
Madam President, I would, first of all, like to thank you for your service in 2019 and here this first meeting of this year for being willing to serve as president. You've, you've worked hard and appreciate your leadership. And with that, I would move that, or nominate David Lindsay for president 2020.
I'll second that.
Actually, there's no need for a second, but I would go ahead and move to close the nominations as well.
Okay. So, we have a, we need a second for the closing of the nominations.
I'll second that.
All right, there we go. All right, so we have nominating David Lindsay as council president for 2020, and the nominations are closed, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Counselor David Lindsay is the president for 2020, so I will pass that to you.
That was fast.
Still hot.
So, then we have a vice president for council.
I would like to nominate Vince Noblet for vice president for the year 2020.
So, we close the nominations?
I second that.
Okay, so we have first and a second for closing of vice president for Vince Noblet as being appointed for vice president. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Vince Noblet is our vice president for 2020.
Thank you.
And at this time, we'll.
Since she handed me the gavel, our meeting is adjourned at seven fifty-seven. Thank you.
Okay.